Let's go on the record. Good evening. My name is Kevin Crane and I'm a hearing officer in the Legal Division of the Department of Public Utilities. With me tonight are Chair Jamie Van Nostrand, Commissioner Stacey Rubin, Paul Osborne, Senior Utility Rate Case Consultant in the Rates and Revenue Requirements Division, and Lavinia Labonte from the Department's Rates and Revenue Requirements Division. This is a public hearing regarding a petition filed by Husatonic Waterworks Company pursuant to General Laws Chapter 164, Section 94, and General Laws Chapter 165, Section 2, for approval of a general increase in rates as well as certain changes to the company's rules and regulations tariff. For the remainder of the evening, I will refer to Husatonic Waterworks as the company. The Department of Public Utilities has doctored the company's petition as DPU 23-65, and it has suspended the effective date of the rate increase and the changes to the company's rules and regulations until June 1st of 2024. The Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts filed a notice to intervene in this matter pursuant to General Law Chapter 12, Section 11E, and therefore is a full party to this proceeding. Pursuant to notice duly issued, the department established a deadline of September 12th, 2023, for interested persons to file a petition to intervene or participate in this proceeding. The department received timely petitions from the towns of Great Barrington, Stockbridge, and West Stockbridge. The department also received a late filed petition to intervene from Mr. Louis James Stark. These petitions to intervene are under advisement, and the department is working on rendering a ruling as soon as possible. The department required the company to arrange for the legal notice of tonight's hearing to be published in the Berkshire Eagle, and also require the notice to be given to local elected officials of Great Barrington, Stockbridge, and West Stockbridge. The department also required the company to mail the notice to all of its customers, email the notice to all customers with an email address on file, and display the notice on the company's website. On September 15th, the company provided proof of compliance with the service and publication requirements ordered by the department. The return of service and proof of publication appear to be in order and are accepted as such. The company provides water service to about 850 customers in the village of Husatonic and Great Barrington, as well as customers in sections of Stockbridge and West Stockbridge. In the instant filing, the company seeks to increase its annual revenues by approximately $809,000. The company claims that its proposed increase is necessary to finance improvements to the water system and its operations to address issues with haloacetic acids, discoloration, fire flows, and system resilience. The company maintains that its proposed increase represents a 113% increase in current revenues. The company was last granted an increase in rates in June of 2019 pursuant to a settlement that was approved by the department in the company's most recent rate case in 2016. As set forth in the legal notice advising of tonight's hearing, if the company's petition is approved as requested, the increases in customer bills will vary depending upon the level of usage. The company states that the cost of water service for the average residential customer will increase from $746 per year to $1,641 per year, or about 120% from current rates. If any customer seeks information about the specific bill impact of the proposed increase, they should speak directly to the company's representatives for that information. In addition to the requested rate increase, the company seeks approval to change its rules and regulations regarding private water mains and terms of customer payment. The department will review the entirety of the company's filing, which will include conducting evidentiary hearings at the department's offices in Boston. There are two types of hearings that the department holds in cases like this. The first type is a public hearing, which we're holding tonight, where we hear comments from the public. The second type of hearing is an evidentiary hearing during which the company and any interveners will present testimony and evidence. The evidentiary hearings in this case will be scheduled at a later date. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to allow members of the public to provide comments or concerns regarding the company's petition in order to assist the department with its investigation. You may also submit written comments on their proposed rate increase to the department by the close of business tomorrow. The directions on how to file comments with the department are provided in the notice of tonight's hearing. I have a few extra copies with me tonight, if anybody would like a copy. Earlier, I circulated a sign-in sheet for folks to sign up to give comments. Once I get through the names on the sheet, I will ask anybody else who wants to leave comments to line up at the podium next to the stenographer. Before we begin with the comment portion of the hearing, I invite Chair Van Nostrand to speak.
Thanks, Kevin. I'm Jamie Van Nostrand. I'm the Chair of the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. I'm pleased to be here tonight. With me tonight is Commissioner Stacey Rubin. We have a few thoughts we want to share with you before we get to the public comment portion of the hearings. I'd like to have Stacey, Commissioner Rubin, start off with that.
Hello and good evening. The Department of Public Utilities is overseen by a three-member commission. Chair Van Nostrand and myself are two of the three members of the commission. I was appointed by Governor Healey in mid-April of this year, and Chair Van Nostrand was appointed three weeks later in mid-May. Though we are less than six months in our roles, we are looking to improve transparency and demonstrate our commitment to hearing from and responding to residents, businesses, and all ratepayers. In the past, commissioners did not necessarily attend public hearings. We think that the Department of Public Utilities can be more transparent with people impacted by our decisions. We are here tonight to demonstrate our interest in listening to you. We traveled here tonight because of the importance of hearing directly from each and every one of you about your experiences and your opinions relating to the company's proposed rate increase. The commission makes its decisions in writing, so we will not make a decision here tonight. We also will not respond to your comments tonight. Please know that we are taking very careful notes and listening intently. After tonight's public hearing, our staff will continue to issue requests for information from the company. Hearing Officer Kevin Crane will preside over evidentiary hearings to gather evidence, and then the parties will have the opportunity to submit written briefs. Only after the commission hears all of the comments, reviews all of this information, and then we will issue a written decision. We will do our very best to respond to your comments in that written decision. I'm going to pass it back to Chair Van Nostrand.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubin. Before we want to hear from you, I wanted to share a little bit more about the Department of Public Utilities. Before 2021, this agency was primarily directed at setting just and reasonable rates, and in that role, we balanced the interests of shareholders in maintaining earning reasonable profit and reasonable return versus the interests of ratepayers in getting safe and adequate service at reasonable prices. In 2021, the legislature expanded our agency's enabling law to require us to not only prioritize safety and reliability, but also climate resiliency, equity, and greenhouse gas emissions reductions. Now that the DPU's mission is more explicitly aligned with the state climate goals and equity environmental justice, it's time to execute it. This means that we are working on a variety of issues in addition to water rate cases. We are facilitating a rapid, equitable renewable energy growth throughout the Commonwealth, including in rural communities, by addressing interconnection backlogs and costs. We are building a modern electric grid that can support electric vehicles, advanced communications, and time varying pricing. We are promoting climate resiliency and adaptation. We are coordinating with regional parties on offshore wind transmission and market reforms that support clean energy. We are working to ensure a safe, fair, and affordable gas transition for all, and we are aligning utility incentives with the state's climate goals. The DPU affects nearly everyone in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our decisions will be better when we hear from you and ensure that your comments influence our decisions. This public hearing is one way that you can participate and influence the agency. Thank you all for attending the hearing this evening. The department has received written comments from several customers, and I suspect we will hear from many of you this evening, about the company's proposed rate increase and water quality issues, including the presence of haloacetic acids and yellow or brown colored water, as well as public safety concerns regarding insufficient water pressure for adequate fire protection. We hear your concerns and take your comments seriously. And now back to Commissioner Rubin for some concluding remarks.
Thank you, Chair Van Nostrand. I want to conclude by taking a moment to talk about the roles of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the Department of Public Utilities, in addressing various concerns. The Department of Environmental Protection's role is to enforce federal and state water quality standards to ensure the delivery of safe drinking water. For example, since the company's last rate increase, the Department of Environmental Protection issued administrative consent orders to the company in 2016, 2018, and again in 2022. In these administrative consent orders, the Department of Environmental Protection ordered the company to address violations in federal and state drinking water laws and regulations. The Department of Environmental Protection's compliance directives ranged from specific reporting and notice requirements to system improvements such as new meters, a corrosion control treatment system, and treatment alternatives to comply with the maximum containment levels for disinfection byproducts like haloacetic acids. The Department of Public Utilities has general supervisory authority over the company pursuant to General Laws Chapter 165, Section 4. In addition, the company must file a petition for our approval of any changes to its rates or terms of service, as the company has done in this proceeding. As part of our investigation, the Department of Public Utilities will review whether the costs that the company is seeking to recover from ratepayers are eligible for recovery under Massachusetts law and our agency's precedent, including whether the costs of these investments made by the company to improve the water system were prudently incurred, and that the underlying investments are being used to benefit the ratepayers. The department will also review evidence regarding the company's performance in managing the water system. In a nutshell, a way to think about our distinct roles is that the Department of Environmental Protection looks at water quality from a health and safety perspective, and we at the Department of Public Utilities look at it from a quality of service and cost perspective. Again, we thank you so very much for making time to attend the hearing this evening and to share your comments with us on the company's proposal. Back to Hearing Officer Crane.
Thank you, Chair Van Nostrand and Commissioner Rubin. At this time, may I have the appearance of counsel for the company, please?
Good evening. My name is Bill Martin of Martin Law Offices for the Husatonic Water Company. With me tonight are the company President Fred Mercer and Treasurer James Mercer. I'd like to thank you all for coming out for this in-person hearing. We think it's really important, and we think it's very helpful that we have such a good turnout, because these are obviously really important matters, and your in-person presence is greatly appreciated. I'd like to start by addressing what might be the elephant in the room, which is the current water situation. It's critical that we do have an open and honest discussion about this matter. There have been a significant buzz and concern on social media about a supposed water crisis in the community. However, it's essential to emphasize that the term "crisis" does not adequately reflect the scientific reality of the situation. We live in an age where information can spread rapidly through various media channels, sometimes leading to sensational and exaggerated claims. Please take the sensationalism with a Gibraltar-sized grain of salt. It's vital for us to rely on critical sources of scientific data to assess the true state of the water quality. While concerns voiced by community members are certainly valid, we must remember that the social media hype around some of these issues has not always aligned with the rigorous scientific assessments that have been conducted by experts in the field. The Husatonic Water Company has assembled a team of talented engineers, experts, who have embarked on an extensive journey of assessment and analysis. These professionals have meticulously examined every facet of the water supply system, leaving no stone unturned. The foundational approach has been rooted in science, with scientific assessments guiding every step. Through countless hours of research and data collection and technical analysis, the company has honed a comprehensive plan that will address the major concerns. During the course of the rate case, we will delve into three important projects, facets and the figures that support the projects. Tonight, we'll hear public comments in our recent rate increase proposal submitted to the DPU. This proposal is a proactive step aimed at addressing general operating expenses, critical water quality concerns, and specifically related to the manganese and haloacetic acid and upgrades to the fire protection, and is in total seeking $4.5 million. I'd like to address the important updates. With respect to the manganese project, it's a building of approximately $900,000, green filters and other equipment of about $775,000. The good news is there's been negligible manganese colorization this summer because primarily the rains and the lower temperatures. The two previous summers were the hottest on record. We're pleased to report that we are in the final leg of a year-long study for a long-term manganese management system, and that study has been successfully completed. The company is now eagerly awaiting final approval from the Department of Environmental Protection to move forward with the construction phase. The haloacetic acid project is a $35,000 project. During the last quarter of testing, the levels had been normalized, and the company expects that once the modification of the disinfectant process is completed, the issue should be resolved. Other projects are the fire protection project, which is a $1.7 million project. In the last 30 years, projects including the construction of a million-gallon tank and distribution mains on upgrades on Prospect, Fairview, and High Street, and Van Dooselen Road have been completed to improve fire protection in the community. There's more to do. The company acknowledges the need to increase fire flows, not merely as a matter of convenience, but as a matter of public safety. Adequate fire protection ensures the protection of lives and property in times of emergency, and the company has addressed this necessity with urgency. As part of the proposal, the Husatonic Water Company seeks to install two additional storage tanks near the center of town. This strategic decision aims to bolster our ongoing fire protection efforts, ensuring that we have the necessary infrastructure to respond responsibly in emergencies. In addition to that, an interconnection with the Great Barrington Fire District at a cost of about $375,000 is important, because it will allow both the fire district and the water company to have emergency backup and resiliency in their water supplies. The last is not necessarily a financial change, but is an important aspect in the regulations, and that is to really specifically address changes to how the rules and regulations deal with private roads. Water lines installed on private roads do not often meet, or sometimes do not meet basic standards. Residents on these streets can experience a wide range of adverse impact. There are 10 private roads in the system that are undersized, some do not have hydrants and some do not have flushing systems that can result in compromised water. The Department of Environmental Protection requested that the company develop a regulation that formalizes responsibilities for residents served by the private water mains. These roads are Brookside Drive, Crimson Lane, Grant Lane, Wright Lane, Rachel Way, Nolan Drive, Walnut Street, Spruce Street, and Ramsdale Street. These private roads have water systems that are not really possible for the company to flush and maintain as they would their own systems. Finally, thank you for your patience and engagement in this important process. We encourage everyone to actively participate and to offer their comments. Together, we hope that the process will result in a rate increase that really aligns with the interests of the community and the needs of the Husatonic Water Company in order to provide the water quality and water service that the residents deserve and expect.
Thank you, Attorney Martin. At this time, the department will receive comments on the company's proposals. The stenographer will transcribe your comments. Please keep in mind that the stenographer cannot transcribe your comments accurately if you are not speaking clearly, or if more than one person is speaking at a time. Therefore, I ask that only one person speaks at a time and the background noise be kept to a minimum. Because this public hearing is a very important source of information for the department, we want to be sure that as many people as possible can speak tonight. So I am asking that each speaker keep their comments brief and to the point, and be mindful of the fact that there are other speakers who wish to comment. Finally, please note that this is an opportunity for you to provide your comments and concerns about the company's petition. It is not an opportunity to question the company. Similarly, it is not meant to be an opportunity to question the department on how we'll conduct this investigation. If time allows, the department will be available after the hearing to answer specific procedural After we hear from all members of the public who wish to speak, I'll adjoint the hearing. The department traditionally allows elected officials the opportunity to speak first. Are there any members of the legislature who wish to make a statement at this time?
My name is Patrick White. I'm a member of the Stockbridge Select Board. I have with me a three-page contract from 1958 between the Husatonic Water Company and the town of Stockbridge. And in this contract, the town of Stockbridge agreed to maintain all public infrastructure within the town borders, unlike other participants in the system. And as such, the town of Stockbridge would like to request a water-only rate from the Husatonic Waterworks, and for the DPU to consider as it determines going forward what rates might be appropriate. The town has spent significant funds both in the past and has significant liability for the public portion of the system going forward, and we believe that a water-only rate is appropriate for us to consider, especially in the light of the potential increases in the rates. Thank you.
Are there any members of the legislature, any other members of the legislature who wish to make a statement at this time?
I think I fit under your next category, if you want to do that, I think. I'm a slot board member.
Let's go ahead. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Stephen Bannon, 19 Fairview Terrace, Chairman of the Great Barrington Select Board. On behalf of the Select Board and the roughly 1,400 residents serviced by the Husatonic Waterworks, we strongly oppose the petition for a rate increase filed with the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities on August 11th and received by our town clerk on August 21st, 2023. While we recognize the need for long overdue system-wide capital improvements, a roughly 120% increase on the average water bill is simply unacceptable. Although water quality issues have surfaced from time to time for decades, deferred maintenance by the current owners and operators have become more noticeable in recent years, especially since 2018, when seasonal manganese spikes become a regular occurrence. Regular HAA5 or haloacetic acid extortnance are even more troubling. In addition to our concerns about the quality of the water this company is delivering to its customers and our residents, we're equally concerned about the ability of the Husatonic Waterworks system to provide adequate water quality, quantity, and pressure for modern fire suppression needs. We've all seen the emails and letters from concerned customers. We've all seen the photos of discolored water ranging from various shades of tea to a dark coffee. We've all seen the media coverage, and we all have stories to share about our interactions with Husatonic Waterworks. It's time to hold the company accountable to the community it serves. We urge the DPU to look closely at the annual report, or return, submitted each year to your department by this privately-owned public utility when considering this request. What this report reveals is that there appears to be sufficient waste in the company's annual expenditure summary to fund at least some portion, if not all, of the annual debt service payments for these required improvements. Their most recent return, a publicly posted document, by the way, for the year ending December 31st, 2022, notes two six-figure-plus annual salaries for company principals amounting to roughly $228,000. Another $143,000 was expended on what's labeled by HWW as "management fees and expenses." That was last year. Payments to Ford credit financing, presumably for each of the principal's vehicles and other transportation-related expenses, amount to about $9,000 last year. $80,000 in general office supplies and expense, $90,000 for miscellaneous general expense. Just these few highlighted costs, the ratepayers, that's who pays this, $550,000 last year alone. A significant portion of the sum of money could likely have been, and should likely have been, invested in each year in the treatment and distribution systems for the water company. If it had been, we wouldn't be gathered this evening. I'll conclude with this. The Select Board believes that the manganese removal system Husatonic Waterworks is proposing to install is necessary. We believe that the water treatment and disinfection methods need to be improved. We believe that the distribution system needs significant upgrades to address decades of neglect. We don't believe is that this company should be granted a rate increase without first exploring any and all other revenue streams, including what looks like to be the company's own operating budget waste to fund these very necessary and very time-sensitive improvements. The residents of Husatonic deserve clean and safe drinking water at a reasonable rate, and it's incumbent upon the two state agencies responsible for regulating public drinking water supplies in the Commonwealth, the DPU and the DEP, to ensure that our residents get just that.
Are there any other members of the legislature or elected municipal officials that would just wish to speak at this time? The Attorney General is represented here this evening. Does the Attorney General's Office wish to make a statement?
Good evening. My name is William Rose. I am an Assistant Attorney General in the Office of Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell. Attorney General Campbell asked me to appear here on behalf of the ratepayers of the Husatonic Waterworks Company. By law, the Attorney General represents the interests of Massachusetts ratepayers in water rate cases before the Department of Public Utilities. On June 23rd, 2023, Husatonic filed a petition seeking department approval of general increase in the company's rates. In its petition, the company seeks an initial increase in rates of approximately $808,808, representing an increase of 112.7% in the company's annual revenues. If the department approves the company's requested rate increase without modification, the following changes will be experienced by the company's customers beginning June 1st, 2024. Typical Husatonic customer with a 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch meter would see their monthly minimum base charge increase by $53.65, an increase of roughly 119%. All customers would see volumetric charges for use above their monthly allowance increase by $12.67 per 1,000 gallons, an increase also of roughly 119%. Public fire hydrant rates would increase by $60.29 to $74.82, depending on size, also increases of roughly 119%. In addition to the increase in distribution rates, the company requests department approval of changes to its terms of service, including by defining private water mains, delineating the responsibilities related to such mains, and granting the company the right to a lien against any property with bills in arrears. The Attorney General's Office has been working hard over the past several months to investigate the company's proposal, including working with experts to ensure that Husatonic provides safe and reliable service at the least possible cost to ratepayers. This is an extremely important case- This is an extremely important case because it will set the rates for roughly 850 Husatonic customers. The Attorney General's Office encourages all customers to take this opportunity to express their concerns and priorities. Your participation is important and makes a difference. Thank you for this opportunity to present Attorney General Campbell's views.[617.79][617.79][applause]
Thank you. Are there any appointee municipal officials who wish to make a statement at this time, such as police departments or fire departments? We will now hear from members of the public. I'm going to start with the people who signed up on the sign-up sheet, and after that, I'll open it up to anybody else who wishes to give comments.
Ken Steiner. S-T-E-I-N-E-R. Ken. Ken Steiner, H-S-N-U-T-R-I-G-H, Husatonic, been in the Husatonic for about 35 years, 36 years. Nobody would like a rate increase. Obviously, we would always be complaining if there was a rate increase, but this size of an increase is not equitable compared to the rest of Great Barrington, where our village within the town of Great Barrington, our rates are much, much higher than usual. But I don't even think that the rate increase, whether it's equitable or not, should be even considered until we find out whether it cleans up the problem. What if we put in all this money, all these filtration systems, and it does turn out to be the pipes and the infrastructure that hasn't been repaired? And now we're paying 100 and whatever you said percent more, and we still have a problem of carcinogenic water, dirty water, water that stains our clothes at times, and other problems. To me, it would make sense that if the company is so sure this would resolve the problems, they invest in it and then request a rate increase to meet the new expenses.
My name is Ann Tully, A-N-N-E-T-U-L-L-Y. I live at 243 Park Street. I purchased my home two years ago without any knowledge of all the water issues in the area. I'm going to relate a more personal situation. It probably mirrors many of the people who also live in Husatonic. I'm retired. I'm a widow. I live on a fixed income. For comparison's sake, 120% increase in a utility bill is untenable, and here are some reasons why. For me personally, my current water bill, I use less than the minimum. My last bill, I used 1,400 gallons, but I paid for 2,500 gallons. So I'm already paying premium. My social security income in a good year, it goes up 3%. In a normal year, maybe 1%. My investments in a good year, they go up maybe 6%. In a normal year, hopefully 4%. Current rate of inflation in the United States is 3.7%. For me personally, I recently installed a whole-house water filter system to the tune of about $1,000 because of the issues with the water and because I have a granddaughter who visits me regularly. In addition to that, I have to pay $300 twice a year to replace those filters. Personally, I come from a long career in the corporate world. If I told my clients that their rates were going to go up 120%, I wouldn't have any more clients. Unfortunately, with the water company, we can't do this. So we are here to ask you, the Department of Public Utilities, to do a fair and complete analysis of the situation and keep all of us residents in mind. Thank you.[864.38][864.38][applause]
Thank you.
I'm Bill Fields, F-I-E-L-D-S. 209 Cottage Street, PO Box 418. Because in Husatonic, if you don't use your PO box, you don't get your mail.[896.18][896.18][laughter] I'm not going to talk about rates. I'm going to talk about something that I, that one of your comments in opening. You are new to the DPU. You've been appointed by a progressive governor. I think you have a chance tonight to do something that maybe DPU's haven't done in the past. It's abhorrent that a public utility is privately owned. I cannot believe that this situation is going to be resolved unless we get to the heart of the matter, which in my opinion is the ownership structure of the HWW. I'm not going to talk about quality water. I'm not going to talk about the problems that I've had, that other people have had. What I'm going to ask you to do is to hold off beyond June on any rate increase whatsoever and get the interested parties, which are the HWW, West Stockbridge, Stockbridge, and Great Barrington, and force them through your regulatory power. And I looked up the word "regulate" before I came here tonight, and as part of the definition, it was to direct. I would like you to direct those interested parties to engage immediately in negotiations to form a private-public ownership of this water company. And I'm not an economist, and I'm not a lawyer. I know it would, there's going to be lots of problems, but it seems to me that this is the only way out of this conundrum of rates. You're not going to get, and I don't believe politically you would accept, 120% rate increase. I've lived in Husatonic since 1975. I've been at present at the rates that have been granted. None of them have been that extraordinary. They are small. And as I sat here tonight, I was thinking that this will be probably where it will fall down, where it will come down. It will be a little rate increase this year, a little rate increase next year, a little rate increase the following year, and pretty soon, the residents of Husatonic are suffering death by 1,000 cuts. What I suggest that you do is you get the interested parties that I have mentioned before and force them to form a public-private corporate structure. This would be the best way, in my opinion, out of this rate problem. Then, the improvements that have to be made would be decided by a public and private structure. The mercers could be retained as consultants, and of course, they would need to be consultants because whether we like it or not, they know the system best. Fred came in front of my house 15 years ago and showed me a map where the pipes in front of Cottage Street were laid down in 1933 or 1934. So they know the company. They know the structure of the water. What is needed is a structure that is accountable to the public. And right now, that does not exist. And in my mind, the only thing that can change the situation is the form of ownership. And again, I urge you to do something that maybe no DPU's have done in the past. Direct the interested parties to engage in active negotiations to change the structure of the company so the public and the private are equal shared.
My name is Christopher Rowland. I live on Prospect Street. R-O-W-L-A-N-D. One of my concerns in this is that this petition would grant the company more powers than they have now. And I'll read. Terms of payment, including customers must grant the company access to property to read, replace, and repair meters. Customers must pay all costs of collection, and the company may place a lien against property for amounts owed. There are people not paying their bills because they've received terrible water. And I believe that giving more powers to the company would increase the number of conflicts in Husatonic between consumers and the company. I believe there's a huge deficit of trust among us for the company. And so I ask you, please do not give them any additional powers. It will only create more conflict.
Hi, my name is Tracy Augumfer, A-U-G-C-O-M-F-A-R. I'm at 218 Oak Street. First of all, you should all congratulate yourselves for being here and not allowing this to happen to you anymore. Besides the health concerns that the current issue, water issue, has, we forget the infrastructure of our own homes, what the water's doing to our pipes, to our washing machines, to our dishwashers, and it's costing us a lot of money. And to ask for more money to repair what they've allowed to deteriorate is inconceivable. I've had issue with Husatonic Water Works since I first moved here from Los Angeles in March of 2020. When I bought my home, I needed to repair the water main, and so the water needed to be turned off at the street, and they refused. And the reasoning for the refusal was because if they turned the nozzle and it broke, they would have to pay for it. So I'm going to leave you with that, and I just really hope you take all of our concerns into consideration.
Regan, R-E-G-A-N. I'm Kathy Regan. I live on Grove Street in Husatonic. We've lived there for almost 20 years. Recently, we just sent in a petition to you with 240 signatures and many, many comments, many articulate comments from the residents that we hope you will take into serious consideration. Just prior to our petition, there was another petition that was sent to you last year that contained over 1,100 signatures and concerns over the same water issues. You know, we've been here 20 years, like I said, personally, and there's been ongoing problems that entire time, just like everyone stated previously. Complete and total trust has been lost with this company. As badly as everyone wants the issues to be fixed, and we understand that supposedly the intent of this increase is to do that, the residents don't even want even a partial increase at this point, not a compromise, not a little bit, nothing more. Something has to be done. There's other types of funding that needs further explanation. We hear over and over again that there's no funding available for a for-profit company, and yet, we do see pretty significant discussion on the web about EPA funding for for-profit water companies. So I think we need to do further research about that. I think we need to consider eminent domain, and I also think we need to consider, as the gentleman spoke of before, a private-public partnership. There needs to be another alternative other than further burdening the residents. So I'm just going to read one point out of the many, many points that were made in the latest petition from the residents, I think was important. According to statistics, the statistics from various places are slightly varied, but they're all in this ballpark and accurate. According to statistics, the median yearly income per household in Massachusetts, across Massachusetts in 2021, was almost $90,000. And on average, the water rate in Massachusetts for the average citizen is $34 per month. In Husatonic, and I can't speak for the other towns that are involved, but Husatonic has the bulk of residents, in Husatonic, the average income is about $45,000 a year. So in summary, residents in Husatonic are paying almost half of what the state average is, and yet, we're paying considerably more for water now already, not to mention the requested increases that are currently made right now. It's absolutely ridiculous. So I think that, I mentioned the alternative funding, and I think that our main concern, again, is that there's going to be a compromise made. So I hope that the comments and signatures that were sent into you with our petition are really reviewed and that every single point made is carefully looked over. We appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is Kevin Regan. We live in Husatonic. I just hope the DPU, and listening to this, thank you for that, that when they consider the 2022 financial statement of the Water Works was for $712,000. 77% were for salaries, lawyers, insurance, and miscellaneous. I hope that with this additional ask for over $800,000, that those proportions don't remain the same. I think we should have a little bit better than 23% contributing to good water infrastructure. Also, a lot of people are talking about the HAA5, and I found this out, and I don't think a lot of people know, that that is held in compliance with something called the LRAA levels, and that's an average of levels. And in the company's press release, they show that in four quarters, the HAA5 range was from 44 to 103 parts per billion, way over. Also, you got to keep in mind that the average was 72 points per billion. But my main point here is, we're not drinking, and we're not consuming, we're not exposing to carcinogen at average. We are, the worst possible scenario is when it's the highest. So in their own statistics, they said it was 103 points. So that's something that we really got to consider. The main impact is when the highest levels. I don't think they should even consider the average, because that doesn't even show any kind of reality in relation to the health benefits.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. First of all, there's absolutely no argument tonight that the water is horrible. The infrastructure is terrible. That's not the argument tonight. Just like to piggyback on a couple of others who spoke. I think before you lay it all on the ratepayers, you need to ensure that all grants available, whether it be federal, private, state, have been looked into and exhausted. And if we can't do it privately, as many of us are told, and Steve Bannon pointed out to me numerous times, then maybe we should consider this partnership. But be careful. We once partnered for a dump. I don't know if many of you remember that. Freddie does. But anyway, I think before we consider a rate increase on the shoulders of the ratepayers, there needs to be proof that every other alternative in grants or funding has been exhausted.
Michelle Lubere?
My name is Michelle Lubere. I live at 70 Division Street. Born and raised at 70 Division Street, and so really familiar with Husatonic Water. There's a definition of insanity, that is, doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting a different outcome. Well, back in, I was doing some research for tonight, and I went through my big box of Husatonic Water materials, and I found my written comments from a DPU hearing, January 27, 2016, before you guys even got at the table. So I thought I would read from that. I state in my comments, anyone who has taken Psychology 101 is familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Maslow asserts that before a person can attain the higher tiers of the pyramid of needs, such as security, social, and esteem needs, the person must first fulfill his or her basic needs. These needs are defined as those needs that are vital to survival, such as the need for water, air, and food, and sleep. In other words, before Husatonic Water Works customers can focus on educational needs, relationships, community service, even public service, our basic needs, including water, must first be attained. For Husatonic Water Works customers, this basic need, water, is about to become hostage to this excessive rate increase. And if a user cannot afford to pay for this basic need, access to this basic need, water, will be terminated. This is unacceptable. Not only will there be a harsh financial impact on Husatonic Water Works customers, but their quality of life will become significantly less than that of our counterparts, who obtain their water from the Great Barrington Fire District at a much lower rate. Routine tasks such as watering gardens, washing cars, doing laundry, even taking a bath, will become greatly restricted and reduced. Businesses served by the Husatonic Water Works will suffer as well. This is interesting, since our town government is encouraging and striving for more business in the Husatonic community. But for something to grow, water is needed. If unable to keep up with the escalating water costs, businesses may wither and die, or worse yet, relocate to another community. That was part of my comments from January 27 to 2016. Fast forward to today, September, what's today's date? 2023, and we're no better off in Husatonic. As a matter of fact, back in 2016, Mr. Mercer explained to the DPU at that hearing that he needed the increase, which at the time, that was only 34%, to cover higher operating expenses and state-mandated upgrades. Well, we're no better off. As a matter of fact, we're probably worse off. Just this morning, before I went to work, brand-new bathroom, I had to scrub the toilet because of stains in the toilet. I don't know about you, but I'm not better off. And as a matter of fact, I have a higher concern about fire safety in my community. Just at the end of July, a neighbor's garage started on fire. I live right across the street. Fire hydrants on my property, and I have a video showing the firefighters trying to get water from the hydrant, and they couldn't. And I'm scared now. But I was looking through my notes, and I found an article from the Berkshire Eagle, Heather Ballow, March 5, 2015. The hydrants of Husatonic, are they adequate in case of fire? Guess not. So here we are. This is insanity. We're right back where we started. So I'm asking you to end this insanity and not grant this increase. Thank you.
My name is Ian Evans, 1031 Main Street. I've been a Husatonic resident for 40 years now. It's interesting to look around and see all the elders of my community here, and I thank you all for being here and caring for this issue. When I look around, I do not see people my age or younger, and there is a large community of people my age who are raising families in Husatonic. A lot of them don't have the time to come to this, are aware of it, have signed petitions, and are just not able to take time out of raising their families to be here. But there's another elephant in the room that causes people from my generation and younger to not be here, and it has to do with your opening statement, the DPU's opening statement, and that is that Massachusetts DPU is doing everything they can for climate change and has a lot of new initiatives. However, if you are my age and are listening to the world news about climate change, you're aware that any of the initiatives that are being put forth on a state level are laughable. And so I believe that the Husatonic residents that have been speaking with you tonight are kind of saying the same thing about the company, is that this rate increase is laughable. We've all experienced brown water. I have a friend, a dear friend, whose place burnt down, and he wasn't able to get pressure to save his place. The young people in Husatonic are aware that the water that we are being sold is not even their water. So ownership of water in itself is an insane thought to people who are in my generation. The fact that we're being asked to pay more for something that is a basic human right is heinous. I hope that on behalf of the people who are my age in the community, who aren't here this evening, that the DPU is able to put pressure on these people to either provide a product that can be consumed without fear of cancer for ourselves or our children, for a rate that is reasonable, or become a public company so that there's the type of transparency that's needed for the system to operate properly and deliver clean water to all of the Husatonic residents. Thank you.
I've reached the end of the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else that would like to give comments this evening? You can head down to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Donna Jacobs, J-A-C-O-B-S. I live at 260 Park Street in Great Barrington, the village of Husatonic. I brought in with me a four-gallon container that I fill probably once every week or so so that I can have potable water for drinking and for making coffee in the morning. That bottle runs out pretty quickly, and I find myself, at my age, rationing water while we know that millions of people around the world struggle to have water, safe water, affordable water, accessible water. It's kind of inconceivable to me to reach this stage of life in retirement and realize that I'm now rationing my water because it means I've got to make a trip in the car a few miles away, fill up my four-gallon container and lift it up over my head and put it on my dispenser at least once a week. And for that reason, I am opposing the approval of the petition for the general increase in rates and stand in opposition to Husatonic Water being granted rights to access private property of ratepayers without prior notice and consent of the property owner. I also oppose a levying of additional fees depending on the number of fixtures in a ratepayer's home. And my reasons are based on government mandate, that our water should be safe, it should be affordable, and it should be accessible. And I say, please, to the DPU, make sure our water is safe. We've received warnings about elevated levels of HAA 5 for years and advised not to drink the water. We've also contended with discolored water, reportedly due to manganese levels in our water supply source and sediment of unknown origin. The problems associated with water safety have not been remediated consistently enough to assure ratepayers that the water is safe to drink, in spite of the fact that we received the most recent report of water levels now, the HAA levels, five levels now being within safety standards. This is the first report that's come in compliance with the safety standards, and we don't know if this is going to continue or it's going to hike back up again. There's no guarantee that our water is safe going forward. There's also no guarantee that increasing our payment for water is going to make sure that water is safe going forward. And about making water affordable. In affected areas of Great Barrington, Husatonic, West Stockbridge and Stockbridge, ratepayers are paying our monthly invoices and paying additionally, as I mentioned, my four-gallon bottle of water, for private water, and paying also for private water filtration in our homes. The cost to ratepayers range from $40 a month to thousands of dollars for people who've installed private filtering systems in their homes. Now, the work needed to upgrade the system has been quoted by HWW at $4,500,000. And other quotes have circulated in the area that the system requires more than $30 million for a full system upgrade. Funding, I believe, for these projects needs to be sought, must be sought, through federal and state grants and funds. The proposed rate increase is estimated by Husatonic Water Works to generate $808,808 a year. And how many years will it take before they reach that $4.5 million that's going to be required for these first initial stages of upgrading the system? I think it's about five years at $808,000 a year. The proposed rate increase is estimated to generate, well, I said that, okay. So in addition to being inconsistent with maintaining affordable water for residents by increasing our rates 112%, there's no confidence among ratepayers that the water quality will improve with this amount of subsidy they're asking ratepayers to make. The point here is not that the water rate should increase, the water rate should be decreased. Across the state, and based, to the best of our knowledge, based on public information, I will reiterate Kathy Regan's point that the water delivery medium, and it was $34 per month in the state of Massachusetts. According to consensus.gov, the median yearly income per household in 2021 in Massachusetts was $89,026. According to consensusreporter.org, the median income per household in Husatonic is $45,197. Husatonic water ratepayers are paying a baseline of $43 per month. This is $9 more than the median rate across the state. And then there are additional fees depending on usage. In order to keep the cost of water delivery consistent throughout the state, HWW, or its successor, Public Water System, needs to lower its rates, not request an increase. Now, how do they pay for system upgrades? If they lower the rates and they don't ask rateholders to subsidize the projects? Let's go to the funding. Let's find the funding that's being distributed as of September 6. The Department of Treasury, the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust approved $168,101,585 to upgrade the water delivery systems in Massachusetts, and this included towns not far away from us, Holyoke and Blanford. Blanford alone received $1,161,935 approved of on September 6, 2023. $1 million is more than $808,000. I believe that there are funds available, it's apparent that funds are available, to fund these kinds of system upgrades without asking ratepayers to pay more than state average for water delivery. We cannot afford to fix the problems, and nor is it our responsibility to fix these problems. It is the responsibility of the local, state, and federal government and the funds that are available. Accessibility is the final point. Water should be safe, it should be affordable, it should be accessible, and my neighbors have spoken already to the problem with water pressure and the lack of delivery of safe water to homes among our ratepayers. Thank you for listening to our comments tonight, and I think you're getting our message. We really need some constraints here, restraints, and if you can lower the rates, you've really done your job. Thank you.
My name is Matthew O'Brien. I live at 33 Van Dusenville for the last 18 years, and I've been to DPU meetings, I've been to meetings of the town, I've talked to Jim Mercer, and I've come to the conclusion that the town of Great Barrington is a corporation listed on Dun &amp; Bradstreet. The DPU is also a corporation. Husatonic Water is a corporation, and talking about bringing us all together to figure this out, you guys have been together. Now, I have offered, I've spoke to Jim Mercer, four people in the town in Husatonic have an indemnity bond that could cover the infrastructure, taking care of that, all of the things that need to be done. I have approached the town. They don't want to hear about it because it's actual credit and not debt instruments that keep getting poured into a $33 million deficit. If we use this indemnity bond, it would actually lower our, now Jim Mercer has all the information and the indemnity bond, and if you want to contact him, he has all that information, my name, and the others that would step up and take care of it. But I think the systemic problem is, is that it's all corporations. It's corporate capture. And there's a thing called externalities. It's always somebody else. Let somebody else do it. But it always ends up on the back of the people that live here. They end up paying the tax through rate hikes through corporations, you know, they always end up paying. And they end up with the short end of the stick as well. And I ask you, if you could, to talk to Jim Mercer and see if we could work it out. Thank you very much.
I live at 208 Pine Street. I just wanted to say a brief word about the opening remarks that Mr. Martin made here tonight, where he talked about this crisis being overblown in social media and in the media, and I really have to take exception to that as a poor way to open a meeting where you're looking for some goodwill from your neighbors because you want a big rate increase. I think that if there are, we all know that not everybody in Husatonic is impacted by these problems that we know of. However, if 10 people are impacted, or 20, or 200 people, those people need to be treated with respect, they needed to show up with concern, and take their worries very seriously. And I think that the Mercers, probably at this point, the best thing they could do would be to come to the DPU and ask you to expedite this process and come up with a way that they can take the lead in financing their own improvements and build some trust among the customers so that we know they're for real, if they are, and then come back and say, hey, we're trying to do the best we can, we knew environmental factors are impacting our water, this is happening, but you've waited too long, fix that and get ahead of that. So please show some respect for your customers and be as aggressive as you can in moving this process forward and put some of your own personal finances in the game. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Windram. I live on Highland Street in Husatonic. I've been a customer. I've been a customer of Husatonic Water Works for more than 25 years, over 20 years as a homeowner. And it's, I've seen a number of requests for rate increases over the years. If anything, we should be seeing a rate decrease. We can't use the water 100% of the time, but we have to pay 100% of the bill. And it seems to me to be very disingenuous each time that the company approaches DPU to ask for a rate increase. It's to improve the infrastructure so that we don't have these problems. And yet, over the 25 years, I really haven't seen any meaningful improvement in the problems that we're having with the water. So for me, that is the core issue, really. It's, it's a little bit of a bait and switch. We, we need to get the money so we can fix up the thing, but there's been, in my opinion, very little good faith effort on the part of the company to actually improve the system in a meaningful way for the residents. Thank you very much.[670.12][670.12][applause]
Hi. I'm John Grogan, 360 North Plain Road, and very quickly, a doubling of water rates is unconscionable, and we can't have that, and you can't allow that to happen. Two things that we've danced around, one thing we've danced around, one thing we haven't talked about at all, so I just thought I'd mention them, is the inequitability of the Husatonic ratepayer and customer as opposed to every other, everybody else in our town of Great Barrington, which pays significantly less than the people in Husatonic do. We are already at a disadvantage, and they want to double the water rates. That, that is not sensible to me. And the, the other point is, we have, already have a very, a low household income, we have a lot of seniors living on fixed incomes, there's a, there's a facility there for seniors called Flag Rock. And basically, in doing this, and this is for the Attorney General as well, they are really leveraging their position as a monopoly and a public utility at the same time to exploit people that are already disadvantaged, and that is also not fair and can't stand. Thanks very much.[761.12][761.12][applause]
Is there anyone else present that would like to leave a comment at this time?
I'm wondering why this rate increase is conjoined with improvements for the fire flow. Fire protection is typically a municipal responsibility and shouldn't be, shouldn't be forced upon the residents. The residents pay taxes to pay for the fire protection and shouldn't also have to pay for the capital expense for the larger water mains or whatever they're intending. Thank you.[816.49][816.49][applause]
Husatonic Water Works has not, as you've been hearing, provided safe drinking water to its residents. It's a private company that no one from Husatonic that I know would support if we were given an alternative. This business, as you've heard, has not addressed issues in the past. So I implore the DOU to not even allow any aspect, not just the increase, but the idea that, that residents are responsible for different, could have a lien on their property or any of the things that are within that request, until there's a resolution and that you look into, why would you allow a company that the majority, it appears, of residents do not trust to do the right thing and have not fixed the infrastructure in all of these years? And so I think it gets to the basic piece of, should we wait a couple of years to find out if Great Barrington, if West Stockbridge, if Stockbridge is going to take this over by eminent domain, if they're going to do something like Steve, Bill Fields suggested, so that we don't even consider any of this? And then the second part of this is that to, is that I do not believe that the customers, we as customers, as people have said, believe that it's going to actually improve and that we shouldn't be charged anything, and that there's some real concerns about the issue, like even on the private roads, like what does that mean? And does that mean that if there's, we're going to have to replace all the pipes on those private roads, those people on those private roads? So it's, there's just so many issues that are, that are part of this, and that we should, in summary, not do anything at all until, or approvals, until to see what happens. And do you want a business running this that the, that the residents don't trust and have not made the infrastructure improvements that we know have been needed to be made for years and that do not make this increase until you also look at maybe even having oversight? Steve Bannon brought up that there's some kind of discrepancy about what's going on with the monies. And so maybe we need an external oversight, if you're going to keep this company, to see how the monies are spent, what could be spent on infrastructure improvements from the company itself. So, thank you.[1020.12][1020.12][applause]
I'm Cristiane Rylee. I've, Riley, R-I-L-E-Y. I've lived in Husatonic for six years now, and I've been fortunate that our water's only turned brown once. But I am here on behalf of all of the young families, or the families who have young children, who are putting them to bed tonight and who have brown water or have had brown water and can't bathe their children and can't drink the water. It's really unnerving, and I'm so glad you're here tonight to hear everyone here, and thank you all for coming out.[1073.26][1073.26][applause]
My name is Rachel Kelly, and I live at 9 High Street, Husaton, uh, West Stockbridge. I'm half a block up from the library in Husatonic, but I, I'm technically in West Stockbridge. I'm a renter, and I'm a single mom, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what living with this water is like. We have pets, I have a dragon, cats, and a child, and when the water goes brown, or even when the water is not brown, when it's smelling like chlorine, and we have to make sure that the toilet's closed so the cat doesn't drink out of the toilet because the, the water is poisonous. We didn't know about that for a while, and it's thanks to social media that we know that we have poisoned water. You know, you can see the brown water. Last summer, we had a lot of brown water, and there was slimy stuff in the shower strainer. It had texture to it, it was weird, it was gross. I would like to know how, I can get you some videos of what the water looks like. I, I have some images of my water filter in the kitchen sink, the Brita filter, with dark, dark coffee water and then clear water that we could drink. I don't import water or buy water, I filter our water. And now I have a really cool Berkey filter on my counter in the kitchen. I got it used on Facebook. And I just had to buy new water filters. They're these large charcoal, huge charcoal filters, they're expensive. And then I also use the Brita filter, like, to pre-filter the water that goes into the Berkey. You can filter pond water and drink it through the Berkey, it's awesome. But living with water that's brown or water that smells like chlorine is, is scary, you know, it's, you don't know what, what it is. And I, you know, I, I, I really worry about the pets, I worry about my kid, and I don't know what it's doing to our health long term. And I can also sense what's happening with the water. You can see it, like, start to get brown, it'll get, like, kind of creepy scary brown, like tea water, and then boom, it smells like chlorine, and you've got clear water again. And that, we know, is, yeah, that's when we know that there's a lot of chlorine and chemicals and probably the HHA5 or 5A, I'm not sure. But anyway, thank you so much for being here, thank you for considering this. I can't stand that we have to even consider paying more for poor water quality. Thank you.[1284.14][1284.14][applause] Where would I send the images? Or videos of the water?
Are you able to stay till the end of the hearing?
Pardon?
Are you able to stay till the end of the hearing?
Yes.
Then we can talk after the hearing, and you can send them to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Cross, C-R-O-S-S. My mother-in-law has been on the Husatonic water line for 52 years. I'm here on her behalf, talking about her. It's hard for me to believe that there's HHA5 in this water that is a potential carcinogen. She was diagnosed in 2021 with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. At the age of 68 years old, she had to fight for her life. She won. But you can't tell me that this water doesn't have something to do with that. I'm a medical professional, and it is in my gut that it was directly related to her water that she drinks. I can tell you that she is allergic, she's had lots of allergy testing, she is allergic to actual dirt that you walk on, I know that sounds ridiculous, but she really is. Anytime she drinks the water, she loses her voice. Why should we pay for something that is proven not to really be safe right now? Let's prove that it is safe and that you're going to continue to keep the levels where they need to be before asking us to pay. There's homeowners that have spent $2,800 putting in these systems, hopefully praying that it takes out the HHA5, that takes out the magnes. There's no guarantee, but you're praying, you're on a whim. Then you go to that expense, you're still paying for your monthly water bill, and then you're paying for Berkshire Spring Water to bring you water because you're that deathly afraid. Nobody should be afraid to drink their water, to bathe in their water. This has gone far enough for an attorney to say, to take the people, you know, the people, to take their word with a grain of salt. Really? Walk a mile in our shoes and then tell us that?[1454.76][1454.76][applause]
Like a Dorito? My parents reside at Crimson Lane, which, after hearing tonight, might not be the best street to live on. As far as social media, that's what makes America great. We can speak the truth, and this is a crisis. It's a crisis for us in our homes. And my parents' home, the water is not fit for consumption. Perhaps you fully don't understand the gravity of the situation. A soup, rice, boiling potatoes, pasta, coffee, you cannot do that in our homes, you cannot do it in my parents' home. You can't even rinse vegetables. To make it a little bit more personable, and the people who know who my parents are, Guy and Mary Saporito, my father is blind. And the bit of self-sufficiency and how he would help my mother would be to wash the clothes, of course she would separate them, wash dishes, brush his teeth, bathe, maybe water the garden and help her, and even perhaps fill the pool by the hose. But you have taken away all of that from my family and my home. And although the child company inherited this unhealthy issue, it should not be the residents of Husatonic to inherit. The water is unusable for consumption, and it definitely has serious side effects. I just recently retired from Big Pharma, so please understand your audience, we are all very well-educated. It's inhumane, and I would actually ask you, would you fill and give your granddaughter, grandchildren this water on a regular basis? I think not.[1586.76][1586.76][applause]
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Berliner. I live at 87 Division Street. These last two ladies are really hard act to follow, but I just want to, once again, sort of put in parentheses the fear factor with all of this here. I've lived at my home in Division Street for 30 years. While I don't have the visible problems with the water, just hearing all this is frightening. I've reduced my shower use to once a week, sorry for anyone that has to work with me if I smell, but it's frightening to do. I haven't been drinking the water for over a year and going out and finding water that is potable, that I can use to cook with and use, just to drink, you know, the expenses are going up and up and up. And to now hear, this, this piece was new to me, to hear that they want to put a lien on our property if we're not paying or if we're paying late or something, this is terrifying. The fear factor is off the charts, and let's go back again to the Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This is way outside of making sure that our human needs are met. Thank you very much.[1664.51][1664.51][applause]
Lee Davis, 9 Sumner Street, Great Barrington. I'm the vice chair of the Great Barrington Select Board, but I'm sleeping, speaking as a citizen. I was not planning, actually, on speaking. Steve Bannon spoke for the select board, so I just was so moved by what's going on. And really what I wanted to say is, this issue is dividing our town, and it's, I'm in Great Barrington, I do not drink the Husatonic Water Works water, and I can tell you that it's, it's creating divisions so deep in our town, and it, it really struck home, one of the reasons why I'm speaking tonight, is that I had surgeries recently, and I stayed with my friend for two nights who lives in Husatonic. I just got back home yesterday, and I couldn't drink the water, she has a bubbler, and, you know, I was just, like, went to the tap to drink the water, and she said, no, 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 you can't drink that, you know, you have to drink the bubbler because the water's not good for you, and you're just recovering from surgery. And it struck home with me, it just, you know, I felt bad using the water, first of all, because I felt like I was drinking too much water, and I, it really, it struck me that there's people that are suffering in Husatonic, and there's vulnerable communities, and there's people that are, you know, using their last paycheck to struggle to pay for water that should be a human right, and that is a human right. And this is an environmental issue, this is an environmental justice issue, this is an environmental issue, equity issue, this is a climate justice issue. So I call out to Governor Healey, who was Attorney General for years and years and years, working in a role as a public advocate, to, to look at this community and look at the division that's happening. And, you know, we have 7,200 people in Great Barrington on one water system, and we have 850 people on another water system, and it's killing us, it's dividing us, it's, it's pitting neighbor against neighbor, it's, it's pitting our residents against the select board, we're in a really difficult position trying the best We're in a really difficult position trying the best we can do. And on a small level, you know, we have people suffering in their homes and scared to drink their water and worried about their kids and we're worried about the elderly. So there's a lot of vulnerable people in this room here and they're crying out, they're vulnerable financially, they're vulnerable with their health, and there's division. And we just plead to you just to come up with some solution. And I'm not talking as Select Board person. I'm just saying there's so much pain in this room right now. And, you know, again, I wasn't going to speak, but it just happened that I just stayed with my friend these past couple days and it just really struck home. And this is her life. Her life is living by the bubbler and figuring out how she's going to pay for her water and trying to keep friends like me safe that she's caring for in her home. So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Rachel Laushen. I live at 204 Oak Street. I've lived in Husatonic for eight years. It's been the best eight years of my life. This is a wonderful community. Our neighbors are wonderful. We have such a wonderful life here. We have the park, we have the rail trail. It's been a wonderful place to raise my son and I wouldn't want to raise him anywhere else. And I know a lot of other families feel this way. There's been a huge influx of young families in our community in the last three years, huge number, I would say 20 to 30% maybe of very young families with kids under five. There's strollers everywhere now. I used to be like the youngest person in the Berkshires. And now it's just, there's kids everywhere. It's Grand Central Station at 3:00 PM at the Husatonic Park. And all we talk about is our water. Like where are the Berkey filters cheapest right now? Our Berkshire Springs supply is really unreliable. We talk about that. Or our water hasn't been brown this week. If you need to come over and do laundry, you can do it at my house. The Husatonic parents, we do not let our children drink the water. That is what we talk about. That is the community discussion at the Husatonic Park. When I heard that they were going to increase our rates, it just felt like kicking us when we're already down. It's so emotional not to feel safe drinking the water. And now to hear that there's going to be a rate increase with no promise of improving our quality, we just can't afford it financially and we can't afford it emotionally. We can't take this on. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Mark Pollock. I live at 9 Hart Street. Thank you for doing your investigation. You can see there's a lot of anxiety in the room, so I would just like to ask you guys in your report to please address a couple issues. One, to make sure that the Husatonic Waterworks is being run properly and that it's not being looted, that there's not money being misspent or used inappropriately, that the company is being run efficiently, that it's not being mismanaged, that there's not incompetence at the company. And thirdly, that you look into the issue that while the company owns the water mains, all of the pipes that go into the houses apparently are owned by the local homeowners. And those pipes, mains and feeder pipes, often have problems. But the homeowners who own those pipes, those feeder pipes, are not allowed to touch them. And so when there's an issue with those pipes, there appears to be a kind of private company who has the, you know, monopoly contract on your pipe. It seems like, you know, could you just look into that that's not a kickback scheme? Okay, thank you.
My name's Charles Williamson. I'm not on the Husatonic water system. I live in Great Barrington, but I visit a lady friend in Husatonic and just want to give you some facts. You are taking notes there. You say the state water is around $30 a month and the state income for people is around $90,000. And Husatonic is $40,000, $45,000 and they pay $40 a month for their water. They actually pay probably twice that much. The months of June, July, and August, 90 days guaranteed, the water is not dependable. It smells and it's brown. So my lady friend, she has to take her laundry to Stockbridge or up to Lee to her daughter's house. Now that she just has to carry it and she's had both knees replaced, so she has to carry her laundry out to the car and she has to carry it into the laundromat and take it out. So she pays for the laundry. She has to pay for the gas and then she has to buy all her water. Like everybody else here, they don't cook with their water. Their water's no good. So to make it fair, you've got the town of Husatonic who's a low-income, they're paying probably twice the amount that the state is paying. And now you're asking a ridiculously want even more money. You're at the tipping point. People can't afford it. There're mainly a lot of retired people there. They can't afford it anymore. I was going to tell you something else. I lost train of thought, but they need help. And I think the federal government with the 1970 Clean Water Act, they could come in. They've come into other cities, big cities, like the capital of Mississippi, Jacksonville. They've found the problems. They didn't pay for it, but they did help with some money. But if you think the people in Husatonic can afford to pay any more money, just put the numbers down there and look at it. They can't afford it. They're already paying too much for water they can't use. The only thing you can use that water for is to flush the toilet. I do not eat any water there. When we cook there, we use bottled water. When I have my coffee there or my tea, I have bottled water. I have never drank any Husatonic water. I can't get it past my nose and I won't even try. I'm just telling you economically, you've got a problem. The town of Husatonic cannot afford any more money. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present this evening that wants to leave comments?
Hi, my name is Givia Dresko. We moved to Husatonic 11 years ago. I went to the meeting, the last meeting, Mr. Mercer raised the price for, it was, we were paying $37 and he raised it to $47. So it's not about, it's about the quality of water that we are getting, but it's even worse. I live in 224 Oak Street. In my street, only in my street, five people have died of cancer, including my husband then months ago. I really, I'm looking for answers. Is this water causing cancer? And now we have to pay 120% more? Come on. Please, I'm asking you guys, help us. We can't afford to pay that much money no more. We have been buying our bottled water for five years since they say the water wasn't good. And I still lost my husband. So I have a kid. I'm a widow, only with my son. Imagine now. Please, I need your help. We need your help. Thank you.
My name is Aaron James. We live on North Plain Road, right near Main Street. And we had, we're kind of on the, more on the outskirts. In the center of town, the water was always browner at its worst. We got it pretty dark brown at our place. And so we invested in an aquasana water filtration system in, I think in '21.
2020.
2020, thank you. And to the tune of $2,300. It was the top-of-the-line aquasana, pre-filter, about lat long, water softener, water conditioner, secondary filter. The free filter goes from paper white to as black as your jacket in a few weeks. And then the secondary filter at the end of that long stream shows signs of brown tinting in it too. That was the first time we had the system. It got clogged up so bad, we got another one, had another two grand. And we still have the same issues. Now the water, we drink our water because we're filtering the hell out of it. Our refrigerators have filters in them too. So we do consume our water, but four grand in a couple of years. And the filters every month cost up about $100 to $150 to replace. Just saying. I think we've already paid upfront for good water that's not being provided through the pipe coming into our house. I'm not paying twice as much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Coleman. I live at 7 Husatonic Court in Stockbridge. And I just had one question. If this company has given this rate increase to improve the infrastructure, what happens after it's done? Do the water rates go back down or do they stay high forever? No one's mentioned anything about that. And the other note, on a little funny note is I have a dog. And I feel my dog's water bowl up with water out of the faucet. He walks up to it, sniffs it, and walks away. He won't drink it. I mean, the dog's smarter than we are, obviously. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Terry Cooglin, C-O-U-G-H-L-I-N. I live at 98 Division Street, which is a business called Granville House. And to Michelle LeBert's comment about businesses, I would love to speak on behalf of local businesses here. My wife and I moved up here about four years ago to fulfill our lifelong dream of opening up a bed and breakfast. We're a five-guest-room bed and breakfast. Nobody ever became rich off of opening a five-bedroom bed and breakfast, but we are here and happy to be here fulfilling our life's dream. And quickly after we opened, that dream became very nightmarish when we discovered, unbeknownst to us, the water situation in Husatonic. Immediately, we opened in July of 2020 and had brown water on a regular basis. We invested $7,000 that we did not have at the time to invest in a very intricate aquasana water filtration system that also cost another $2,000 and two days to install based on the size and structure of it. I'm no different than anyone else in this room in terms of the experience that we've had, except ours is much more on a larger level. If you can imagine a five-guest-room bed and breakfast, including also my family that lives in our house, on any given day, you have 14 people taking showers, you have a dishwasher that runs twice a day, and you have two washing machines washing clothes that runs consistently for 12 hours a day. Needless to say, our water bill is extremely high at the moment. And if it were to incur the rate increases that are being discussed right now, it would have a profound impact on our business. We love being a part of this community. We love being business owners of this community. But rate increases like this will truly affect our quality of our life and our ability to be a successful business in the town of Husatonic, village of Husatonic. So we are grateful to have you here and thank you for listening to our concerns.
My name is Deborah Herman. I live at 373 North Plain in Husatonic. I just want to comment on two things. One is the fact that the Mercers are asking for more power to collect money from customers who are delinquent. I was actually part of a group of people that filed a demand letter seeking redress from Husatonic Water. They did not in any way, in any meaningful way respond to this demand letter. We were unable to pursue it in court for lack of money. I then pursued Husatonic Water through a small claims case, only to have Husatonic Water get my small claims case, which was about compensation for the water filter system I put in my house, moved to civil court where they knew, they knew that I could not afford to pursue that case. And when I attempted to drop the suit without prejudice, they viciously went after me and I was forced to hire a lawyer to go into motion court to get that case dropped. So I ask you, if a company that is so aggressive towards a customer who has the gall to seek some sort of justice, to have their day in court, to force them into civil court where they know they cannot proceed, should this company be given more power over its customers? I'd say no. I say stop now and have some common sense. The second thing I want to say is about these private roads. I live on a state highway, so I'm not concerned about myself. But I want to see Husatonic Water prove that they have no responsibility for these mains. At the time they acquired this company, that they did not also acquire these mains. I want to see the town look into the history of these mains and before you grant them the right to say, screw you all you people who live on these so-called private roads, you fix your own mains, look into the story in detail and figure out whether or not that's really true. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Keresey, K-E-R-E-S-E-Y. I'm the chair of the Select Board in West Stockbridge. And although I don't personally drink Husatonic Water, I'm in town in West Stockbridge, I would simply like to say that we've heard incredibly moving stories from the residents of Husatonic who are serviced by the Husatonic Waterworks Company. And on behalf of my board, I'd like to say that we stand in firm support of the 66 homes that are part of West Stockbridge and served by the Husatonic Waterworks Company, as well as all of the other residents in Husatonic who are in this unfortunate situation. Thank you for being here.
Is there anyone else that would like to leave comments at this time? I don't see any. I would like to thank everyone for attending tonight and also providing your comments. The public hearing is now adjourned. We're off the record.